Welcome to the House of Representatives. Your safety is our top priority. Please take a moment to familiarize yourself with our emergency exit plan. First, remember that illuminated exit signs will always show you the way. Please remain calm and follow these signs in an orderly manner. Now, for your specific location. If you are on the plenary floor, exits are at both ends, leading to the north and south wing lobbies. You may also use the main entrance glass doors, which open toward the flagpole area. If you are in the middle gallery, your primary exit is through the main entrance glass doors located near the flagpole area. If you are in the second or third floor galleries, in addition to the main door on your level, emergency exits are located at the ends of the seed rows on both the east and west sides. All these exits will lead you to the main hallway stairways, going down to the main entrance and out to the flagpole area. A quick guide. If you are on the south side of the gallery, turn right as you go through the emergency exit. If you are on the north side, turn left. Both will lead you towards the main hallway stairways. If you are seated at the rostrum, your nearest exits are on the north and south sides, leading directly to the rear entrance lobby and out to the helipad area. Finally, if you are unable to leave the plenary hall, do not panic. Essential safety items: a hard hat, whistle, bottled water, and flashlight are readily available under your table for your immediate use. Thank you for your attention. Your safety is our shared responsibility.
Sessionist issue. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to take up additional reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of the bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committee.
Additional reference of business bills on first reading: House Bill 5686, establishing the Presidential Merit Scholarship Program by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education:
House Bill 5687, amending sections 58 and 59 of the DILG Act of 1990 by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Local Government:
House Bill 5688, transferring the National Fire Training Institute from the Philippine Public Safety College to the BFP by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety:
House Bill 5689, mandating the procurement from small-scale producers in the implementation of the National Feeding Program by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture:
House Bill 5690, declaring the Maramo section of the Anggat River system in San Mateo Norzagray Bulakan an ecotourism destination by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Tourism:
House Bill 5691, strengthening the powers of the Philippine Sports Commission by Representative D. Fustino Michael Carlos.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development:
House Bill 5692, providing for the national policy on preventing adolescent pregnancies by Representatives Sendanya, Jokno, Ismula, and Bagao.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development:
House Bill 5693, strengthening the incentives for private sector participation in public educational institutions by Representative Suarez.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education:
House Bill 5694, mandating the formulation and institutionalization of a comprehensive infrastructure development master plan by Representative Gintu.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways:
House Bill 5695, institutionalizing the Shared Service Facilities Project for MSMEs by Representative Gintu.
To the Committee on Micro, Small, and Medium Enterprises Development:
House Bill 5696, providing for the fair use of social media, AI and internet technology for the holding of free, orderly, honest, peaceful, and credible elections by Representative Gintu.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms:
House Bill 5697, creating the Occidental Mindoro General Hospital in Sablayan, Occidental Mindoro by Representative Tariela.
To the Committee on Health:
House Bill 5698, strengthening the National Agriculture/Fisheries Extension System by Representative Estrella.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food and the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources:
House Bill 5699, creating the Independent Commission Against Infrastructure Corruption by Representative Tianko.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization:
House Bill 5700, establishing the OFW Pension Fund by Representatives Revilia Bryan, Mercado Revilia, and Revilia Ramonjolo.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs:
House Bill 5701, to expressly grant the Office of the Ombudsman the power to examine and access bank accounts and records during an investigation by Representative De Lima.
To the Committee on Justice:
House Bill 5702, intensifying breast cancer awareness campaigns by Representative Lazatin.
To the Committee on Health:
House Bill 5703, protecting the rights of internally displaced persons and penalizing the acts in violation thereof by Representatives Ismula, Jokno, Sendanya, and Bagao.
To the Committee on Human Rights:
House Bill 5704, institutionalizing the National Commission on Indigenous Peoples' Educational Assistance Program by Representatives Ismula, Jokno, Sendanya, and Bagao.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education:
House Bill 5705, declaring October 29 of every year as National Indigenous Peoples' Day a special non-working holiday by Representatives Ismula, Jokno, Sendanya, and Bagao.
To the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Committees and Indigenous Peoples:
House Bill 5706, establishing the National Measurement Institute of the Philippines by Representative Ledesma.
To the Committee on Science and Technology:
House Bill 5707, establishing food security cold storage facility for agricultural products in every province in the country by Representative Breones.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food:
House Bill 5708, mandating all commercial establishments serving food to the public to provide one-half cup of rice serving as a menu option by Representative Breones.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry:
House Bill 5709, providing for local absentee voting for private security professionals by Representative Breones.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms:
House Bill 5710, enhancing the discount on the purchase of goods and services of senior citizens and PWDs by Representative Odokado.
To the Committee on Ways and Means: the Committee on Senior Citizens and a special committee on persons with disabilities.
House Bill 5711, renationalizing Agusan del Norte Provincial Hospital in the city of Butuan by Representative Corvera.
To the Committee on Health:
House Bill 5712, establishing scholarship and return service program for indigenous peoples pursuing teacher education by Representatives Ismula, Jokno, Sendanya, and Bagao.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education:
House Bill 5713, establishing a central multi-species marine hatchery in the city of Cipalay Negroes Occidental by Representative Alvarez Mercedes.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources:
House Bill 5714, institutionalizing sustainable waste management and energy recovery through environmentally sound waste-to-energy technologies by Representative Suntay.
To the Committee on Energy and the Committee on Ecology:
House Bill 5715, modernizing the Bureau of Immigration by Representative Suntay.
To the Committee on Justice:
House Bill 5716, modernizing the Civil Registration and Error Correction Process under the Philippine Civil Registration and Vital Statistics System by Representative Suntay.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations:
House Bill 5717, strengthening the Basis Conversion and Development Authority by Representative Olivares.
To the Special Committee on Basis Conversion:
House Bill 5718, expanding the coverage of the Masustansyang Pagkain Para Sa Batang Pilipino Act to include undernourished children in public secondary schools by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture:
House Bill 5719, establishing the Classroom Building Acceleration Program by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture:
House Bill numbers 5720 and 5721, declaring the National Shrine of Our Lady, Our Mother of Perpetual Health, popularly known as the Redemptory Church, and the Minor Basilica and National Shrine of Mary, Help of Christians in Paranyake City as heritage sites and tourist destinations by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Tourism:
House Bill 5722, repealing Republic Act Number 10973, thereby revoking the authority of the Chief of the PNP and the Director and the Deputy Director for Administration of the CIDG to administer oath and to issue subpoena and subpoena ducesticum by Representatives Correne Luis, Tinio, and Elago.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety:
House Bill 5723, mandating government officials and employees to execute and submit a written permission to examine, inquire, or look into all their deposits and investments thereby waiving the bank secrecy law by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries:
House Bill 5724, institutionalizing a varsity sports program in elementary and secondary schools by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture:
House Bill 5725, providing free insurance for covered applicants of overseas employment certificates by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs:
House Bill 5726, requiring proof of available parking space from motor vehicle owners in metropolitan areas as a prerequisite for the registration of a motor vehicle with the LTO by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Transportation:
House Bill 5727, stimulating the recovery, growth, and development of the MSMEs by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Micro, Small, and Medium Enterprises Development:
House Bill 5728, mandating the establishment of nursing homes for the abandoned, neglected, unattached, or homeless senior citizens by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Senior Citizens:
House Bill 5729, granting hazard pay to workers in critical industries during a state of calamity or emergency or public health emergency by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment:
House Bill 5730, granting hazard pay to covered employees of the government of the government by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation:
House Bill 5731, exempting qualified indigents from the payment of professional examination fees by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation:
House Bill 5732, expanding the scope of disclosure of bank and financial deposits by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries:
House Bill 5733, prohibiting the indiscriminate use of vehicles, sirens, and other emergency vehicle lights and audio accessories for moving motor vehicles except as prescribed by law by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Transportation:
House Bill 5734, prohibiting the selling and/or buying of admission tickets through unauthorized sales channels by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry:
House Bill 5735, institutionalizing and enhancing the Skill Certificate Equivalency Program of the Civil Service Commission and TESDA by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education:
House Bill 5736, strengthening the Philippine Bamboo Industry Development Council by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food:
House Bill 5737, mandating finance education program for all persons applying for a marriage license by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations:
House Bill 5738, strengthening the procedure for registration of voters and adopting a system of online registration by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms:
House Bill 5739, providing for protection of the remittances of OFWs by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs:
House Bill 5740, enhancing the medical access of OFWs and their families by strengthening the OFW hospital by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Health:
House Bill 5741, providing for a national employment assistance program by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment:
House Bill 5742, providing enhanced protection, security, and benefits for media and entertainment workers by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment:
House Bill 5743, declaring the three nautical miles surrounding the Calayaan Island Group and Scarborough Shoal in the West Philippine Sea as marine protected area under the National Integrated Protected Area System Act of 1992 by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Natural Resources:
House Bill 5744, deterring the continued proliferation of immoral doctrines, obscene publications and exhibitions, and indecent shows by increasing the penalties therefore by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children:
House Bill 5745, establishing a green public procurement program for all branches of government by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Sustainable Development Goals:
House Bill 5746, establishing mechanism for enhanced citizen participation in governance by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on People's Participation:
House Bill 5747, establishing a framework for blue economy by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs:
House Bill 5748, mainstreaming the use of bamboo as a sustainable material for the built environment by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Sustainable Development Goals:
House Bill 5749, establishing a legal scholarship and return service program for deserving students by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education:
House Bill 5750, penalizing online hate and online harassment and providing additional protections against cyber libel by Representative Benitez Alfredo.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws:
House Bill 5751, establishing the Classroom Building Acceleration Program by Representative De Lima.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture:
House Bill 5752, mandating the establishment of animal bite treatment centers in all national and local government hospitals by Representative Lazatin.
To the Committee on Health:
House Bill 5753, establishing a modern, innovative, and competitive Philippine maritime industry authority by Representative Romualdo.
To the Committee on Transportation:
House Bill 5754, separating the Lison Valley Elementary School Annex in Lison Valley Pagadian City, San Buanga del Sur from the Lison Valley Elementary School to be known as the Sirawag-Pinentuluan Nu Gesalan Subanan Elementary School by Representative U. Joseph Kim.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture:
House Bill 5755, expanding the coverage of the fire code of the Philippines and strengthening the BFP Modernization Trust Fund by Representative Fente Belia.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety:
House Bill 5756, transferring the National Fire Training Institute from the Philippine Public Safety College to BFP by Representative Fente Belia.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety:
House Bill 5757, rationalizing the rank classification and strengthening the organizational structure of the BFP by Representative Fente Belia.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety:
House Bill 5758, strengthening the Philippine Coast Guard by Representative Romualdo.
To the Committee on Transportation:
House Bill 5759, providing for the inclusion of the study of the Constitution as a subject in the curriculum of senior high school students under the K-12 program by Representative Defensor.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture:
House Bill 5760, strengthening the Philippine Economic Zone Authority by Representatives U. Joseph Kim, U. Jaisal Victoria, and Glepa.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry:
House Bill 5761, recognizing the declaration of indigenous cultural communities, indigenous peoples of conserved territories and areas within their ancestral domains by Representative De Lima.
To the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples:
House Bill 5762, prohibiting the conversion of irrigated and irrigable agricultural lands for non-agricultural uses by Representative De Lima.
To the Committee on Agrarian Reform:
House Bill 5763, institutionalizing the Presidential Merit Scholarship Program for deserving students by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Siada Mari, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education:
House Bill 5764, creating the Department of Disaster and Emergency Management by Representative Odokado.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience and the Committee on Government Reorganization:
House Bill 5765, to further promote the general welfare and enhance the statutory benefits and incentives of public health workers by Representative Gonzalez Aliza Micaela.
To the Committee on Health:
House Bill 5766, to allow LGUs to intervene on government infrastructure projects in their localities which they deem to cause irreparable harm by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways:
House Bill 5767, amending the mangnakarta for public school teachers thereby providing free annual comprehensive physical checkup for public school teachers by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture:
House Bill 5768, providing for hospital and healthcare benefits for public school teachers and their dependents by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education:
House Bill 5769, mandating the creation of the position of a human settlement officer in all provinces, cities, and municipalities by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Local Government:
House Bill 5770, strengthening the mental health services of state universities and colleges by Representative Escudero.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education:
House Bill 5771, providing for the automatic promotion of government officials and employees upon retirement from government service by Representative Escudero.
To the Committee on Civil Service and the Professional Regulation:
Resolutions: House Resolution 413, directing the appropriate committee of the House of Representatives to conduct an investigation on the alleged illegal mining exploration activities of the Wogel Corporation in Tupax del Norte and Nueva Viscaya and the possible cancellation of exploration permit issued by the DNR Mines and Geosciences Bureau by Representative De Lima.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 414, urging the appropriate committee to conduct an inquiry on the risky transactions, poor investment decisions, and alleged violations that resulted in losses amounting to 8,800 million pesos in the GSIS by Representative De Lima.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 415, directing the House to investigate the reported anomalous investments made by the GSIS by Representatives Tinio, Elago, and Correne Luis.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 416, directing the House through the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization to investigate the non-declaration of annual cash benefit for compulsory life insurance policies and the lack of dividends granted to qualified members of the GSIS by Representatives Tinio, Elago, and Correne Luis.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 417, congratulating and commending Carlos Edriel Piulo for winning a gold medal at the 53rd Artistic Gymnastics World Championship in Jakarta, Indonesia on October 25, 2025 by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development:
House Resolution 418, urging the Committee on Natural Resources to conduct an investigation on the exploration activities of the Wogel Corporation in Tupax del Norte and Nueva Viscaya and the possible revocation of its exploration permit issued by the DNR Mines and Geosciences by Representative Kaiton.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 419, expressing the profound condolences of the House on the passing of former Executive Secretary Eduardo R. Armida by Representatives Mercado Revilia, Revilia Bryan, and Revilia Ramonjolo.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 420, commending and congratulating the entire Philippine tourism sector and its stakeholders led and guided by the DOT for bringing honor to the nation by securing six major awards at the prestigious 2025 World Travel Awards Asia and Ocean gala ceremony by Representative Escudero.
To the Committee on Tourism:
House Resolution 421, directing the House through the Committee on Public Accounts and Committee on Agriculture and Food to conduct an immediate and comprehensive investigation into the systemic corruption and overpricing of farm-to-market road projects of the Department of Agriculture and DPWA by Representatives Tinio, Elago, and Correne Luis.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 422, directing the Committee on Natural Resources to conduct an inquiry into the illegal mining operations of Wogel Corporation in Tupax del Norte, Nueva Viscaya, and urging the relevant executive offices to suspend all destructive mining operations and related anti-democratic police and military operations in the region by Representatives Correne Luis, Tinio, and Elago.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 423, congratulating and congratulating
House Resolution 423, congratulating and commending Filipino boxer Yumir Felix Marshall for his gallant victory in championship performance in winning the vacant WBC International Middleweight Title on October twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five at the Araneta Coliseum in Quezon City, Philippines. Representative Plato.
Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 424, directing the appropriate committee to conduct an investigation into the reported large-scale dredging and extraction activities in San Felipe Zambales and to examine the involvement and accountability of foreign contractors, including the China Harbor Engineering Company Limited. Representative Delima.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 425, directing the House through the Committee on Basic Education and Culture to investigate the extremely low performance of the school building program of the DepEd under Duterte and Marcos administrations. Representatives Tinio, Co., Renee Louise, and Elago.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 427, congratulating the Livingstone International School Nexus Robotics Team for winning the Platinum Award in the Senior Division Idea Contest at the Universal Robotics Challenge Twenty-Twenty-Five World Finals held in Osaka, Japan. Representative Lazatin.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Resolution 428, urging the strengthening of anti-bullying measures and the integration of comprehensive mental health support in schools, communities, and online spaces. Representative Pu.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Resolution 429, congratulating Key and Matthew L. Aguilar for winning gold medals in both the Philippine International Mathematical Olympiad Twenty-Twenty-Five Final Round and Thailand International Mathematical Olympiad Twenty-Twenty-Five to Twenty-Twenty-Six Heat Round. Representative Lazatin.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
Communication Letter dated October twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five of the Bank Officer Six, BSP Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services, transmitting to the House of Representatives duly certified copies of certain BSP issuances.
Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Additional Reference of Business Resolutions. House Resolution 430, honoring and commending the bravery and sacrifice of the six fallen airmen of the Philippine Air Force who perished in a tragic aircraft crash in Nogusa del Sur while conducting humanitarian assistance and disaster response operations in the aftermath of Typhoon Tino. Representative Degamo.
Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Resolution 431, congratulating and commending the Michelin Guide Twenty-Twenty-Six AWGs in the Philippines for bringing honor and international recognition to the country's culinary industry. Representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution 432, directing the Committees on Disaster Resilience, Climate Change, Sustainable Development Goals, and other relevant committees to conduct a joint inquiry into the state of climate risk and vulnerability in the Negros Island Region with particular focus on the province of Negros Occidental. Representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 433, expressing the profound sympathy and condolences of the House of Representatives on the demise of the Honorable Representative Eduardo E. Gulyas of the First District, Province of Cebu. Representative Olivares.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 434, expressing the profound condolences of the House to the government and people of the United States of America on the passing of former Vice President Richard Bruce Dick Cheney. Representative Olivares.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 435, urging the House, the NBI, and other concerned national government agencies to refrain from granting clearances or other similar official government documentation to Elizalde Zaldeco, former House Member and Representative of the Ako Bicol Party List, pending ongoing investigations into his alleged involvement in anomalous flood control projects. Representative San Fernando.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 436, expressing the collective concern, compassion, and support of the House for the people affected by the aftermath of Typhoon Tino in the central Visayas, Southern Luzon, Mindanao, and the rest of the Visayas, and Typhoon Uwan in the northern and eastern parts of the Philippines, including Kagayan, Isabela, the Bicol Region, Calabar Zone, and parts of the Cordillera Administrative Region. Representatives De Faustino, Marcos, and Libanan.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 437, expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of Honorable Felicito Tong Sipa Yumo, former representative of the First Legislative District of Batan during the Eighth, Ninth, and Tenth Congresses. Representatives De Faustino, Marcos, and Libanan.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 438, congratulating Los Cantantes de Manila for winning two gold medals and the conductor's prize at the Twenty-Twenty-Five Busan Coral Festival and Competition. Representative Hernandez Cherise Ann.
Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution 439, congratulating and commending the Philippine National Winner and Runners-Up of the Twenty-Twenty-Five James Dyson Award for their innovative contributions to sustainability and engineering. Representative Hernandez Cherise Ann.
Committee on Science and Technology.
House Resolution 440, congratulating and commending Miguel Tabuena for his outstanding victory at the inaugural International Series Philippines on the Asian Tour. Representative Hernandez Cherise Ann.
Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 441, congratulating and commending Kirk Bondad for winning the Mr. International Twenty-Twenty-Five. Representative Hernandez Cherise Ann.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 442, congratulating Ernest John E. Obiana for his gold medal victory at the Atletang Ayala World Pool Vault Challenge in Makati City, Philippines. Representative Hernandez Cherise Ann.
Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 443, congratulating and commending Emma Mary Tiglao for winning the Miss Grand International Twenty-Twenty-Five. Representative Hernandez Cherise Ann.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 444, congratulating and commending the Filipino winners of the Twenty-Twenty-Five International Exhibition for Young Inventors held in Osaka, Japan. Representative Hernandez Cherise Ann.
Committee on Science and Technology.
House Resolution 445, congratulating the Philippine delegation for their successful campaign at the Twenty-Twenty-Five Asian Youth Games held in Bahrain. Representative Hernandez Cherise Ann.
Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 446, directing the DNR to strictly monitor the implementation of Angeles City Comprehensive Land Use Plan with respect to the protected agricultural land and no build zone areas in barangays sa Pangbato, Angeles City. Representative Lazatin.
Committee on Natural Resources.
House Resolution 447, expressing the profound sympathy and heartfelt condolences of the House to the family of the Honorable Eduardo R. Armida, former representative of the First Legislative District of Batangas during the Ninth, Tenth, and Eleventh Congresses, and Executive Secretary under the administration of President Gloria Macapagal Arroyo. Representatives De Faustino, Marcos, and Libanan.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 448, congratulating and commending Dr. Tricia Marie Gan Bedilio for placing top five in the March Twenty-Twenty-Five Physician Licenseur Examination conducted by the PRC. Representative Ang.
Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Resolution 449, directing the appropriate committees of the House to conduct an investigation into the issuance of permits, licenses, and environmental compliance certificates by the DNR which may have contributed to deforestation, forest degradation, and the increased vulnerability of communities to flooding, landslides, and other disaster risks. Representative Ordanes.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 450, directing the appropriate committees of the House to conduct an inquiry on the reported practice of certain medical practitioners who require patients to purchase medicines exclusively from them or from specific sources they control or endorse. Representative Ordanes.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 451, institutionalizing and integrating nature-based solutions to address flooding and other climate change disasters. Representatives Sendanya, Diokno, Ismula, and Bagao.
Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Resolution 452, directing the appropriate committees of the House to investigate into the disastrous effect of Typhoon Tino in Cebu Province and other provinces and hold accountable those responsible for contributing to decatastrophe through negligence, corruption, or violations of environmental laws. Representative Hernandez Cherise Ann.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 453, congratulating and commending Engineer Ivan Joey Gadot for placing top two in the February Twenty-Twenty-Five Mechanical Engineering Licenseur Examination conducted by the PRC. Representative Ang.
Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Resolution 454, expressing congratulations to Miss Emma Mary F. Tiglao for winning in the Miss Grand International Twenty-Twenty-Five. Representative Tolentino.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 455, expressing great pride and joy of all Filipinos in the various medals won by the Philippine delegation in the Third Asian Youth Games held in Bahrain last October twenty-two to thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Representative Tolentino.
Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 456, expressing congratulations to Filipino Q artist Cheska Centeno for winning the World Pool Association Women's Ten Ball World Championship last October twelve, twenty-twenty-five in Bali, Indonesia. Representative Tolentino.
Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 457, expressing congratulations to Filipino Q artist Jonas Magpantay for winning the World Pool Association Qatar World Cup Ten Ball Championship last November two, twenty-twenty-five in Doha, Qatar. Representative Tolentino.
Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 458, expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of the Honorable Eduardo E. Gulyas, former representative of the Third Legislative District of the Province of Cebu during the Seventh Congress and of the First Legislative District of Cebu during the Ninth, Tenth, Eleventh, Thirteenth, Fourteenth, Fifteenth, and Eighteenth Congresses. Representatives De Faustino, Marcos, and Libanan.
Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, on the part of the majority, I move to nominate and elect the following members to the following committees. The Committee on Agriculture and Food as member, Zia Alonto Ajong. The Committee on Basic Education and Culture as member, Zia Ajong. To the Committee on Ecology as member, Bella Swan Singh. To the Committee on Energy as member, Zia Ajong. To the Committee on Health as member, Zia Ajong. To the Committee on Mindanao Affairs as member, Zia Ajong. To the Committee on Muslim Affairs as member, Zia Ajong. The Committee on National Defense and Security as member, Zia Ajong. The Committee on Public Accounts as member, Zia Ajong. To the Committee on Public Information as member, Zia Ajong. To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms as members. Jonathan Keith Flores, Chino Almario, Joel Chua, Charisse Ann Hernandez, Jinky Luistro, Lordan Suwan, Celso Argancia, Miro Kimbo, Rolando Valeriano, Esme Almangundadatu, Ryan Recto, and Jude Asidre. The Committee on Ways and Means as member, Zia Ajong. To the Committee on Women and Gender Quality as Vice Chairperson, Isabel Maria Zamora. To the Special Committee on the West Philippine Sea as Vice Chairperson, Zia Ajong. To the Special Committee on Peace, Reconciliation, and Unity as member, Zia Ajong. To the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities as Vice Chairperson, Isabel Zamora. And to the Special Committee on Reforestation as members, Doris Manikis, Dani Domingo, Carmelo Lasatine, and Kokoi Salvador Isomu.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we would like to recognize the guests of Honorable Doris Nanay Bing I. Manikis of the Second District of Zambales, namely Vice Mayor Miguel Maniago Junior, Sangunian Bayan Members Michael Ian Ebido, Maria Veronica Matibag, Sarah Jane Menor, Athos Maya, Melvin Misa, Kristen Rommel Bisola, Gerwin Galicia, SKF President Carlo Madarang, Secretary to the Sangunian Maria Virginia Escanyo, Local Legislative Staff Officer Abigail Monsalud, Records Officer Catherine Balodbino, Secretary Amelia Liciran, Stenographer Danielle Marie Mana, Clerk Nika Kate Hayanan, Maria Melody Seher, Maria Teresa de la Cruz, Hipolito Emakio Administrative Aid Hernani Corpus, Richard Magno, Ronaldin Rabago, Amor Alves, Jessa Joy Navarro, Sheila May Eclavia, Evelyn Merced, Carl Emil James Balarta, Crystal Beckson, Aldrin Molyne, Patricia Merced, Evelyn Mose, and Shaina Maniago.
Thank you, Majority Leader, to the guests of Second District Zambales. Congressman Doris I. Manikis. Welcome, on behalf of Speaker Faustino III, Walji. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Good afternoon. Magandang, magandang hapon. Thank you. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, we would also like to recognize the guests of Honorable Timothy Joseph Tim Kaiton, namely Sangunian Bayan Member of Municipality of Casibu, Harold Hufalar, Lando Paduyao, Nick Pablo, Dewey Ballasuit, and Brigitte Kitano.
To the guests of Attorney Timothy Joseph Tim I. Kaiton, Congressman Long District of Nueva Viscaya. Tanposila. On behalf of Speaker Walji, uh, Di, welcome to the House of Representatives. Magandang, magandang hapon. Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of the business for the day, we move to consider House Resolution Number One-Six-Five under Committee Report Number Ten. And may we request that the Secretary General read the title of said resolution.
Secretary General, please proceed. Thank you.
House Resolution One-Six-Five, Resolution urging the full cooperation and support of all concerned government agencies, GOCs, SUCs, and LGUs in assisting the inter-agency task force created under Administrative Order Number Thirty-Five, Series of Two Thousand Twenty-Five, to ensure the successful hosting of the FIFA Futsal Women's World Cup Twenty-Twenty-Five.
Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of House Resolution Number One-Six-Five.
There's a motion to adopt House Resolution One-Six-Five. All those in favors, say aye. All those not in favors, say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution One-Six-Five, as stated, is hereby adopted. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, with leave of the House, I move to open the privilege hour.
There is a motion to open the privilege hour. Any objection? The chair hears none. Privilege hour is therefore open. Majority Leader, please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the gentleman of the FPJ Partylist, the Honorable Brian Poe, to avail of the privilege hour.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Uh, the gentleman from the Partylist FPJ Pandai Bayan Nihan. Representative Brian Poe is hereby recognized. Please proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, my fellow Filipinos. I rise before you today with a heavy heart and a clear purpose. In the past week, our country has been battered by back-to-back typhoons. Proof that climate peril is no longer a distant threat, but a daily reality. As we mourn lives lost, homes destroyed, and communities displaced, we also stand at a moment of choice to simply respond to disasters or to build resilience that prevents them from becoming catastrophes. Just days ago, Typhoon Tino carved a path of devastation through the Visayas and Mindanao. The latest government reports show that at least two-hundred-thirty-two people have died and one-hundred-twelve remain missing. The province of Cebu bearing much of the brunt. Entire villages were flooded, homes and livelihood were swept away. No sooner had we begun recovering when Typhoon Uwan made landfall in Northern Luzon. Over one-point-six-million people were evacuated. Power grids collapsed, bridges were torn apart, coastal towns braced for disaster, and families in mourning with loved ones lost. In Aurora Province, authorities warned up to thirty-million Filipinos could be affected or could be exposed to hazard zones. As I speak today, families sleep in evacuation centers, entire barangays remain inaccessible, and our emergency service personnel are stretched beyond their limits. These twin storms are not isolated. They are symptomatic of a climate system in upheaval. We know for a fact that the Philippines is ranked the most climate-prone or disaster-prone country in the world by the United Nations World Risk Index. We face an average of twenty typhoons every year. Now, as seas warm, storms grow stronger and more destructive. The era of business as usual in terms of disaster response is over. Our survival depends on two things. How we prepare for storms and how we prevent storms from becoming full-scale human disasters. Allow me to speak of the organization closest- of the organization closest to my heart, FPJ Pandai Bayanihan, the people's movement inspired by the life and legacy of my late grandfather Fernando Poe Jr. From its earliest days as Ang Pandai Bayanihan Foundation, it has stood shoulder to shoulder with Filipinos in their darkest hours, from Typhoon Yolanda in 2013 to Super Typhoon Odette in 2021. The foundation has consistently mobilized thousands of relief packs containing rice, clean water, hygiene items, warm meals for communities in Iloilo, Lete, Batangas, Kagayan, Samar, and beyond. Whether responding to volcanic eruptions in Taal, floods in Bulacan, or typhoons that crippled entire regions, Pandai Bayanihan's efforts have always been rooted in urgency, compassion, local awareness, and ensuring that in the community, no one is left behind. Yet, as climate disasters grow more frequent and more severe, with Typhoon Nando in 2025 and Typhoon Tino and Uwan just days ago, the need for more than just emergency aid is clear. The FPJ Pandai Bayanihan is still and will continue to extend help to our kapandais in need. But for more than a decade, this has been our calling to turn compassion into action and crisis into community. It is through these experiences that I have learned a simple but powerful truth: We cannot stop the storms, but we can prevent them from destroying lives if we prepare, if we protect, if we work together. This spirit of Bayanihan is what must now guide our national climate response. Before I entered public office, I dedicated years to studying and advocating for sustainable and science-based climate policies. My academic work focused on climate change, adaptation, and international environmental policy. And I have had the privilege of learning from experts and institutions shaping global responses to climate crisis. I joined environmental campaigns and spoke in universities and communities about the connection between biodiversity loss and human vulnerability long before standing here before you as a lawmaker. These experiences have taught me that effective climate governance requires not only compassion, but competence, the ability to translate science into policy and policy into protection for our people. When Typhoon Tino hit, the hardest-hit areas were those where natural defenses had been degraded, mangroves lost, watersheds denuded, forests depleted. Conversely, areas with intact ecosystems fared better. The message is clear: Ecosystem protection is not optional. It is a core component of climate resilience. It is in this context that the global 30-by-30 target, protecting 30% of land and oceans by 2030, becomes deeply relevant to our national fight back. Protecting nature is protecting ourselves. I commend the Department of Environment and Natural Resources and its Biodiversity Management Bureau for taking the lead. On September 1, 2023, they spearheaded a national workshop launching the 30-by-30 initiative in the Philippines, bringing together government agencies, indigenous peoples, local communities, and civil society to chart our path forward. They followed this with the adoption of the Philippine Biodiversity Strategy and Action Plan, or PBSAP, 2024 to 2040, through DNR Administrative Order Number 202523, aligning our national biodiversity framework with the Kunming-Montreal Global Biodiversity Framework. This leadership is commendable, but the journey ahead is long and the time is short. According to DNR/MBB's Protected Area Information System, or PAIS, approximately 15.51% of our land area, or 4.65 million hectares, is under protection, while only 1.42% of marine waters, or only about 3.14 million hectares, are covered. We are halfway to 30% on land, but lagging far behind at sea. While an initial roadmap was launched in 2023, a full, detailed, national 30-by-30 framework, or roadmap, with clear numerical targets, priority sites, governance mechanisms, as well as financing and monitoring, has not yet been finalized or institutionalized. This brings me to the measure that I will file today. My resolution calls for action, not aspiration. I invite my colleagues to support a House Resolution urging the DNR, LGUs, indigenous communities, and all stakeholders to take these urgent steps. First is to complete and publish the National 30-by-30 Roadmap within six months. It must set clear national targets for land, inland waters, marine ecosystems, map priority areas, integrate indigenous and community-conserved areas and other effective areas based on conservation measures, assign agency roles, secure funding, and establish transparent monitoring. Second is that we must expand coverage rapidly, especially at sea. Prioritize critical biodiversity hotspots, such as the Verde Island Passage, Sulu-Sulawesi Seaside, the Benham Rise. Third would be to empower communities and indigenous stewards. Protection means people at the center of barangays, fisherfolk, and farmers as co-guardians of forests and reefs. Secure long-term funding and finance. Conservation must be financially sustainable through national budgets, public-private partnerships, and innovative mechanisms such as blue carbon credits and climate resilience bonds. Fifth is to integrate nature-based defenses into our national adaptation strategy: mangrove reforestation, watershed rehabilitation, and wetland restoration. Sixth is to ensure transparency and oversight. Annual reports to Congress using PAIS and verified data must be mandated. And lastly, to inform and involve the public. Finally, we must involve and inform the public, especially our youth, through nationwide environmental education and outreach programs that turn awareness into action. Mr. Speaker, protecting 30% of our land and sea is not a bureaucratic exercise. It is a moral and practical imperative. It means that when the next typhoon strikes, we will not be watching helplessly as entire towns disappear beneath waves. Mag-sama-sama po tayo at magtulong-tulong. Humilos tayo para sa isang bagong umaga. In unity and purpose, we can do more than survive storms. We can build a resilient Philippines that thrives on change. I therefore appeal for your support for this resolution and all measures that align with our policies with the urgency of climate crisis. Let our legacy be that. At a time of great peril, we chose to act. Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, the climate crisis is here, but so is our resolve. Together, let us protect our people and the only home that we have. Let us show that the Filipino-Bayanian spirit, combined with wise policymaking, can prevail. Maraming salamat po at mabuhay ang Pilipinas.
Mabuhay, representative Brian Poe. On a personal note, this chair is also a resident of Liloan, Cebu, one of the hardest-hit areas in that province. Dagang-dagang salamat. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer the speech of the Honorable Brian Poe to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
There is a motion to refer the speech of Honorable Brian Poe for the appropriate committee. Is there any objection? The chair hears none. That motion is thereby approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the gentleman from the Lone District of Nuevo Viscaya, the Honorable Timothy Joseph E. Kaiton, to avail of the privilege hour.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The gentleman from Lone District of Nuevo Viscaya, Representative Timothy, Attorney Joseph E. Kaiton. You are recognized, sir. Please proceed.
Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, and to the people we represent. Isang araw na kaigandahong sa atin lahat. I rise today in the matter of collective privilege to speak not just as a legislator, but as a son of Nuevo Viscaya, whose duty is to defend the land, the water, and the people that define who we are. This is not the Nuevo Viscaya ambition. This is not the province we promised to protect. As we strive to build, protect, and empower the brand new Nuevo Viscaya, we must stand firm on one truth: That progress can never come at the cost of our lifeblood, our watersheds, our forests, and our community. Nuevo Viscaya is as headwaters of major river systems that supply irrigation, drinking water, and power across Kagayan Valley and neighboring provinces. Protecting these watersheds is not just environmental advocacy. It is a matter of public safety, food security, and justice. To allow extractive and destructive operation in this fragile zone is a gamble with life itself. Yet, despite this, last August 7, 2025, the DNR issued exploration permit to Wogel Corporation, covering more than 3,100 hectares in the municipality of DuPont del Norte for gold and copper exploration. Residents have raised grave concern citing lack of genuine consultation, absence of surface owners' consent, and the risk of these activities posed to their farms, water sources, and forest buffers. Last October 17 this year in barangay Bitnong, DuPont del Norte, a commotion occurred between residents and police authorities amid the enforcement of a temporary restraining order, or TRO, directing the clearing the access road in the area. This unfortunate incident is a stark reminder of our urgent need for transparency, consultation, and genuine dialogue between the government, communities, and all stakeholders. Mr. Speaker, the following barangays: Oyau, Mungia, Makabenga, Bitnong, and Inaban falls within the scope of Wogel Corporation's exploration permit. These are largely agricultural and residential communities. Their livelihoods depend on land and water. Consultations reveal deep apprehension among residents and barangay officials regarding the environmental and social impact of the exploration. Under Article 2, Section 16 of the Constitution, the state is mandated to protect and advance the right of the people to a balanced and helpful ecology. It is therefore imperative that the issuance of this permit by the DNR in aid of legislation be reviewed and investigated to ensure that due process, community consent, and environmental safeguards were faithfully observed. This is not merely a matter of compliance. It is a matter of justice. Nuevo Viscaya has long stood as an agricultural heartland of Northern Luzon, a promise sustained by fertile soil, clean water, and the hard work of our farmers. To endanger the very foundation of our agriculture and to threaten the future of every community that depends on our waters are not acceptable. That is why I early filed the House Bill Number 402, the Nuevo Viscaya as Watershed Heaven Enhanced Protection Act, a measure that declares all watershed areas in the province as protected zones and identifies other zones close to mining operations that puts agriculture, water, and people of Nuevo Viscaya first. Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, this issue is not isolated. The devastation brought by Typhoon Uwan has shown us how vulnerable our communities remain to floods and landslides. Yet, it is also a reminder of us of the vital role of Sher Madre, a mountain range created by the Lord Almighty, which plays a shielding lives and properties from greater disaster. In its natural state, our watershed acts as the province's first line of flood control, absorbing rainfall, stabilizing soil, and regulating flow of rivers that feeds both farms and households. Protecting our forests and watersheds, therefore, is not only an environmental duty. It is an essential component of disaster prevention and flood control. This is the Nuevo Viscaya we fight for, one defined not by exploration, but by conservation, sustainable livelihood, and honest governance, where every flood control project truly exists at the ground. No ghost projects, no wasted people's money, only real protection for our people and communities. Mr. Speaker, this representation calls for the fast-tracking of the proceeding of investigation on the reported anomalies of several flood control projects. These projects must not become means for corruption or ghost implementation. Our people deserves real flood control structures that truly safeguard their homes and farms, not hollow promises. In this light, I like to express my strong support to the swift passage of the pending measure seeking to establish independent commission against infrastructure corruption. While there are existing bodies that addresses corruption, these proposed bills will establish their mandates and provide a clear legal foundation for an independent commission empowered to investigate the misuse of funds in flood control and other infrastructure projects. Because of the heart of this fight are not minerals or profit, but the people who live and sojourn in the soil of the province. Our people are more important than profit. Their lives, their farms, their future are worth more than gold buried beneath our soil. This reminds us that safeguarding our forests, our watershed, is not only an environmental duty, but a constitutional one, a commitment to the right of every Filipino to a balanced and helpful ecology. It is in this light where we remain steadfast in holding the Constitution, respecting the rule of law, and complying with all lawful orders, always with the people's welfare at the heart of every action we take. As we commemorate Environment Month, we cement our commitment. We will not let our guards down. We will stand firm and we will continue to protect and defend our province, Nuevo Viscaya, our home, our heritage, our future. Maraming maraming salamat po.
Maraming maraming salamat, Representative Timothy Joseph E. Kaiton, Lone District of Nuevo Viscaya. Lone District of Nueva Vizcaya. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I move to recognize the Honorable Lady, Honorable Sara Ilago of the Gabriela Partelis for her manifestation.
Congressman Sara Ilago of Gabriela Partelis is hereby recognized. Please proceed, ma'am.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. This representation from Gabriela Women's Party would just like to manifest our full support to the call of the Honorable Caiton to ensure that we're able to stop all destructive mining, exploration, and other related activities in Nueva Vizcaya. In fact, Mr. Speaker, this representation along with the representation from Kabataan Partelis, the Honorable Beneko, and Act Teachers Partelis, the Honorable Antonio Tinio, filed a resolution last month dated October 30, which is a resolution directing the House Committee on Natural Resources to conduct an inquiry in aid of legislation into the illegal destructive mining operations of Wogel Corporation in DuPont del Norte and Nueva Vizcaya, and urging the relevant executive offices to suspend all destructive mining operations and also other related reported anti-democratic activities of law enforcement groups in the region. We say this, Mr. Speaker, because in relation to the right to speak, the right to express the dissent of our kababayans in DuPont del Norte in their opposition to this reported illegal and destructive mining operations. They have also experienced various forms of threat, harassment, and intimidation. Kaya po, nababahala ang representasyon na ito na sa matibay at malakas na paninindigan ng ating mga kababayan. Nakakaranas din sila ng ibat-ibang porma ng pagpapatuhimik, ng panggigipet, at pagtapak sa kanilang karapatan. Kaya po, tayo po ay nakikiisa sa panawagan na hindi lang mag-imbestiga. Kundi maitigal na ang lahat po ng mga amkaso na may kinalaman sa pagkasira ng kalikasan. Gayun din 'yung mga paglabag sa karapatang pa tao na ating mga kababayan. Finally, I'd also like to manifest po our call to support nature-based solutions to flooding and other activities that are destructive to our environment. Kinakailangan po natin suporta para sa forestation, suporta para sa pagtitiyak na napapangalagaan talaga natin ang ating kalikasan at karapatang pan tao. Maraming maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker, at maraming salamat din as Honorable Caiton for bringing this matter to the fore of this plenary session. Thank you.
Maraming maraming salamat, Gabriela Partelis Sara Ilago. Your manifestation observations are duly noted. Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer the speech of the Honorable Caiton and the manifestation of the Honorable Sara Ilago to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The speech of Honorable Timothy Caiton and the manifestation of Gabriela Partelis Sara Ilago is referred to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the gentleman of the Kamanggagawa Partelis, the Honorable Elijah Rumbawa San Fernando, to avail of the privilege hour.
To the Congressperson of the Partelis Kamanggagawa, Representative Elijah Rumbawa San Fernando. He will be recognized, sir. Please proceed.
Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, and to all our fellow workers inside and outside the halls of Congress. Magandang hapon po. Ang paksa po na aking tatalakayin ngayon ay pumapatungkol sa pangako ng pag-asenso. As the economy grows and develops, we are forced to ask: who is included and who is left behind? As we review the common legislative agenda for the 20th Congress, we at the Kamanggagawa Partelis express our grave concern on behalf of the workers who are the true driving force who prop up our economy. Sa pagtakdaan ng mga prioridad ng administrasyon, mukhang napag-iwanan naman na naman ang mga Manggagawa. The Legislative Executive Development Advisory Council, or LEDAC, is tasked with synchronizing the legislative agenda with our national development goals. As an advisory and consultative body key in developing the national legislative framework, it mobilizes Congress to prioritize legislation, often to the exclusion of other measures. Sa madaling sabi po, Mr. Speaker, makikita sa LEDAC ang pangunahing batas na nais maipatupad ng administrasyon. Let us begin by reminding ourselves of the priorities of LEDAC. Section 1 of RA 7640 dictates that the body shall act in accordance with its constitutional mandate to promote a more equitable distribution of opportunities, income, and wealth, and expand productivity as a key to raising the quality of life for all, especially the underprivileged. Our president himself has made pronouncements to this effect. At the Philippine Development Forum 2025, PBBM said, "We committed to generate jobs, accelerate poverty reduction, and transform our economy into one that is inclusive, resilient, and ready for the future." At a national employment summit, he said, "Let us lay the groundwork to ensure a decade of meaningful employment and economic growth." Sa konteksto ng pagkilala ng mga pangakong nakasaad sa batas at sa mga salitang binitawan mismo ng ating pangulo, lumalakas po ang ating loob na maningil. Sa priority agenda, nasaan ang pagtaas ng sahod ng mga Manggagawa? Nasaan ang mga batas na nakabalangkas sa pagkilala sa mga hinahing ng mga trabahanti? We assert that worker-centric bills and a legislated wage increase should not be a mere afterthought of LEDAC. As workers are a vital element to national development, so too should legislation that addresses their needs be a priority of government. This is not just an economic imperative, but a moral one too. Our economic context demands bold action. From 2001 to 2024, our GDP, ang pangkalatang kita po ng ating bansa, has more than tripled, implying massive economic growth. Let us be clear. This is in large part due to the sustained and steadily increasing efforts of our workers, as exemplified in the near doubling of labor productivity during that period. Ang ating ekonomiya ay lumalago habang tumataas ang produktibidad ng ating mga Manggagawa. Following the promise of inclusive growth, shouldn't workers also enjoy the benefits of this growth? The sad reality, Mr. Speaker, is that workers have been tragically left behind by our economy. Nominal minimum wage increases have not kept up to pace with the havoc that inflation has caused on our wage earners. Sa tabi ng kakarampot na pagtaas ng sahod, hindi dumadali ang buhay ng mga Manggagawa at ordinaryong Pilipino. Indeed, the increase of salaries are a mere illusion when we consider the increase in price of goods and services. Mr. Speaker, mga kasama, the last legislated wage increase was in 1989, 36 years ago. Back then, the minimum wage was 89 pesos, compensating for the inflation that is equivalent to a real wage of 572 pesos by today's standards. Contrast this to today's average national minimum wage of 493 pesos. Ibi kong sabihin, Mr. Speaker, at mga kasama, mas marami pang nabibiling produkto ang minimum wage noong 1989 kaysa sa ngayon. Sa harap ito ng sinasabing paglago ng ating ekonomiya, wage increases then are not about growth, but about recovery, and a failing recovery at that. In this equation, we have not even considered the farce that is the provincial rate, where we have witnessed the real stagnation and lowering of workers' wages, especially at the margins of society. Remembering that labor productivity has almost doubled, it is tragic that the average pay for workers across the board has grown by a mere 16%. The data paints a clear picture. While the economy grows, it is primarily the businesses that have benefited. Yumayaman ang mga negosyante habang napagiiwanan ang mga Manggagawa. Is this the inclusive growth that our laws and our president promise? Critics of wage increases, who are often business elites or academics who follow their doctrines, often point to their impact on employment and inflation. A study from the UP School of Labor and Industrial Relations, UP Soler, belies these claims, finding that, and I quote, "wage increases can have no impact on employment", while its effect on inflation is, and I quote, "very small and in fact insignificant." End of quote. These elites furthermore cite that the benefits that employers enjoy would eventually be felt by workers. This is known as trickle-down economics. Yep, it is our president himself who has conceded that trickle-down economics is a failure back in a speech as a senator in 2015. Given the above, Mr. Speaker, the exclusion of labor-centric legislative initiatives from the common legislative agenda is fundamentally misguided and unjust. Aside from wage increases, we insist, Mr. Speaker, that other pro-labor measures be considered, including those which tackle the problem of contractualization both in the private and public sectors. Finally, we ask for the full consideration of the integrity of our labor framework, which extends beyond wages. It is deeply troubling that the LEDAC priority measures have no mention of reinforcing the right to freedom of association. Upholding the provisions of the International Labor Organization Convention Number 87, which the Republic of the Philippines has ratified, is a solemn commitment. Freedom of association. The right to organize and collectively bargain is a fundamental human and economic right. It is the workers' primary tool for ensuring fair economic participation and recovering the value of their labor. All of this is in the context of worsening attacks on our trade unionists and our consistent placing among international observers as being among the worst countries for workers. Mr. Speaker, we must affirm the right to freedom of association as a non-negotiable fundamental right that must be protected, promoted, and actively enforced in all legislative agenda. Our critique of the LEDAC agenda is that it fundamentally misdiagnoses the problem of our economy. Tinitignan po ng administrasyong ito ang mga Manggagawa bilang consumer lamang na kailangang bigyan ng tulong at hindi bilang isang producer na dapat bigyan ng sapat na sahod. We see this reflected in the priority list, amendments to the Pantawid Pamilyang Pilipino Program, or Four-Piece Act, and assistance to individuals in crisis situations, AICs, and amendments to the Universal Health Care Act. These are necessary social nets, Mr. Speaker, yes, but they are fundamentally measures of damage control. They address the symptoms of low income, hunger, lack of health care, poverty, by giving doll-outs and subsidies instead of addressing the root cause, the pathetically low wage in the marketplace. These measures perpetuate a cycle of dependency. We are forced to legislate charity because we refuse to legislate economic justice. More than that, we see business-friendly laws that provide tax amnesty and governance-centric laws which miss the mark entirely. Mr. Speaker, mga kasama, the very question of prioritization implies a constant tension between the different elements of our economy. Sa pagtuon ng ating ng atensyon sa isang sektor, minsan ay nakakalimutan ng iba. This is unfortunately reflected in the LEDAC agenda, which prioritizes businesses and patronage over workers. The promise of progress, ang pangako ng pag-asenso, must not be reserved for the few. True progress means that the hands that build our nation also share in its fruits. We cannot speak of development while our workers go hungry. We cannot speak of productivity without recognizing those at its core. Our call to the administration is simple, Mr. Speaker. Let us go back to the drawing board and think of our workers. Fellow lawmakers, we at the Kamanggagawa Partelis ask for nothing more than the alignment and unity of workers and government. Ipaglaban po natin ang dignidad ng ating mga Manggagawa. Revise the LEDAC to include a legislated and a national wage increase and other pro-worker measures. Failing that, we as Congress should push for these initiatives ourselves. Only through this can we fulfill the promises of the law and uphold our end of the bargain between worker and government. Yung laman po, maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker, at mga kasama sa bulwagan ito.
Maraming maraming salamat, Kamanggagawa Partelis Congressman Eli San Fernando. The Chair agrees with you. Well said. Let us legislate economic justice, not charities. Thank you, sir. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer the speech of the Honorable San Fernando to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The speech of Honorable Kamanggagawa Partelis, Congressman Eli San Fernando, as well, is referred to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to avail of the privilege hour, I move to close the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The motion is approved. The privilege hour is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move to refer the following House resolutions to the appropriate committees. House Resolution Number 311 to the Committee on Dangerous Drugs. House Resolution Number 314, the Committee on Games and Amusements. House Resolution Number 326, the Committee on Labor and Employment. House Resolution Number 334, to the Committee on Public Information. House Resolution Number 338, the Committees on Public Order and Safety and National Defense and Security. House Resolution Number 341, the Committee on Public Works and Highways. House Resolution Number 343, to the Committee on Dangerous Drugs. House Resolution Number 349, to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture. House Resolution Number 351, to the Committee on Health. House Resolution Number 353, to the Committee on Health. House Resolution Number 357, to the Committee on Housing and Urban Development. House Resolution Number 359, to the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries. House Resolution Number 364, to the Committee on Women and Gender Equality, and House Resolution Number 365, to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability.
Thank you, Majority Leader. There is a motion to refer the following House Resolutions to the appropriate committees as already stated. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, pursuant to our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move to refer the following speeches to the appropriate committees. The speech of Representative Aquino Magcaysay delivered on October 6, 2025, to the Committee on Senior Citizens. The speech of Representative Erise delivered on October 6, 2025, to the Committee on Appropriations. The speech of Representative Cruz delivered on October 7, 2025, to the Committee on Cooperatives Development. The speech of Representative Espares delivered on October 7, 2025, to the Committee on Cooperatives Development. The speech of Representative Banyas Nograles delivered on October 7, 2025, to the Committee on Public Works and Highways. The speech of Representative Jokno delivered on October 7, 2025, to the Committee on Appropriations. The speech of Representative Elago delivered on October 7, 2025, to the Committee on Women and Gender Equality. The speech of Representative Plato delivered on October 7, 2025, to the Committee on Senior Citizens. The speech of Representative Shimura delivered on October 8, 2025, to the Committee on Disaster Resilience. The speech of Representative Nazal delivered on October 8, 2025, to the Committee on People's Participation. The speech of Representative Levista delivered on October 8, 2025, to the Committee on Public Works and Highways. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Majority Leader. There is a motion to refer the following speeches to the appropriate committees as stated. Any objection? The Chair hears none. Said motion to refer is hereby approved. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the change of referral of House Bill Number 3962-4379-4406-4627 and 4908, establishing a mandatory crop insurance coverage for small farmers from the Committee of Agriculture and Food to the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
Thank you. There is a motion to change the referral of the said House Bills. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion to move for a change of referral of the following House Bills is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to include additional co-authors to House Resolution Numbers 165, 287, 309, 320, 325, 336, 361, 372, 436, 437, 447, and 458 as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Majority Leader. There is a motion to include additional co-authors of the aforementioned stated House Resolutions. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion to include additional co-authors of the aforementioned resolutions is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move to consider House Resolution Number 436. And for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution.
Secretary General, please proceed.
House Resolution 436, resolution expressing the collective concern, compassion, and support of the House of Representatives for the people affected by the aftermath of Typhoon Tino in the central Visayas, southern Luzon, Mindanao, and the rest of the Visayas, and Typhoon Uwan in the northern and eastern parts of the Philippines, including Cagayan, Isabela, the Bicol Region, Halaburzon, and parts of the Cordillera Administrative.
Majority Leader, thank you.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt House Resolution Number 436.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution 436. All those in favor say aye. All those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 436 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move to consider House Resolution Number 437. And for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution.
Secretary General, please proceed.
House Resolution 437, resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of Honorable Felicito Tong Sipa Yumo, former representative of the First Legislative District of Batan during the 8th, 9th, and 10th Congresses.
Maraming salamat, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt House Resolution 437.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution 437 in consolidation. Majority Leader with House Resolution 393. Is there any objection? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 437 in consolidation with House Resolution 393. Is hereby adopted. Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move to consider House Resolution Number 447. And for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution.
Secretary General, please proceed.
House Resolution 447, resolution expressing the profound sympathy and heartfelt condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of the Honorable Eduardo R. Ermida, former representative of the First Legislative District of Batangas during the 9th, 10th, and 11th Congresses, and executive secretary under the administration of President Gloria Macapagal Arroyo.
Majority Leader, thank you.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt House Resolution Number 447.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution 447 in consolidation, House Resolutions 388 and 419. All those in favor say aye. All those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 447 in consolidation with House Resolution 388 and 419. Hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move to consider House Resolution Number 458. And for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution.
Secretary General, please proceed.
House Resolution 458, resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of the Honorable Eduardo Edigul Rivera Gulyas, former representative of the Third Legislative District of the Province of Cebu during the 7th Congress, and of the First Legislative District of Cebu during the 9th, 10th, 11th, 13th, 14th, 15th, and 18th Congresses.
Thank you, Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt House Resolution Number 458.
There is a motion to adopt Resolution or House Resolution 458 in consolidation with House Resolution 433. All those in favor say aye. All those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 458 in consolidation with House Resolution 433. Hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session.
Session suspended. Session resume. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn sessions until Monday, November 17, 2025, at 3:00 PM in the afternoon.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Session joined. Until Monday, November 17, at 3:00 PM. Thank you very much. Session adjourned. Thank you.